Mic check, test one-two, test. Mic check, this is testing, test. I'm just getting this out of the way, I don't want somebody to trip on it. Mic check, test one-two, testing of lectern, mic. Testing one-two, this is a test of the boardroom, checking audio for Webb. Testing audio for Granicus, test one-two. Mic check, test, one-two. Hey, what are you doing here? And you look, and you look great. We're glad to see you here. I am so glad that you're here because... Sorry, how do you... Yeah, it's... Testing, mic check, test.
If you'll take your seats, we'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome all of you to the January 16th meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College. Before we move into the order of business, we have a special presentation. Dr. Joe McIntosh of the Tarrant County College Foundation.
Good evening, President Appleman, members of the board, Chancellor Hadley. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come tonight. Last fall, we had the opportunity to recognize and say thank you to two members of the Board of Directors of the TCC Foundation who had served since its rebirth, if you will, in 2001, and who had now completed their terms of service. Another member who had also was part of that original charter group of directors has likewise completed her service as a director but couldn't be with us that night because she was traveling out of the country, Ms. Jenny Tighe. But we didn't want to miss opportunity for us and you to also say thank you, to say thank you on behalf of Tarrant County College, on behalf of the thousands of students, employees, faculty, administrators, to express appreciation, your appreciation, to her for her tireless work, dedication and service on behalf of this institution and its critically important work and mission in this community. Now, just a few notes about Jenny's service. Jenny is the immediate past chair of the Foundation Board of Directors. Much of the Foundation's growth in recent years can be credited directly to her steady, insightful and active leadership. She has most directly been involved in the planning and chairing, the steering committees for each of the significant special events that have brought the Foundation an influx of new funds, supporters and visibility, beginning with the 40th anniversary celebration in 2008, lunch with the 40th, 43rd President of the United States in 2010, a little river music in 2011, and the most recent, an evening with Bill Cosby in 2013. Jenny and her husband Joe have also established the Virginia and Joe Tighe Endowed Scholarship Fund for the benefit of Tarrant County College students. Jenny is an active leader amongst leaders in this community. She's the past chair of the Tarrant County Arts Council, Fort Worth and Northeast Tarrant County Arts Council, I believe that's the correct term. She's a former mayor, pro tem of the city of Colleyville. She's chaired multiple civic boards, and I can honestly say just about anything good that happens in and across Tarrant County, you can find that Jenny Tighe is a key part of the leadership and a reason for its success. Chancellor Hadley, Board President Appleman, if you will join Jenny here in front of the dais, you have a tribute plaque that you'd like to present to Ms. Jenny Tighe tonight. Jenny, would you... And if I may, the plaque reads, "Presented with esteemed gratitude to Virginia Jenny Tighe, Charter Board Member, for your leadership, commitment, dedication and unwavering support on behalf of the students and mission of Tarrant County College and service to the entire citizenry of this great community. Board of Directors, May 2001 to September 2013." Jenny, would you like to say a comment?
Well, thank you, thank you so much. Joey, you exaggerate a little bit. I think I've been pretty active, but you honor me very much by your words. It's been my pleasure to be part of the Foundation since I think we had something like $60,000 when we first started, and now we are a multimillion dollar foundation. So, it's been a wonderful, a wonderful journey, helping to make it grow, and I've loved every minute of it. I just think, Tarrant County College is... Sorry, I can't help it, I just seem to be one of these people that get teary, but it's... I've loved Tarrant County College. The longer I've worked with it, the more I've enjoyed it. I think you're all just wonderful, special people. You offer so much to the students and the citizens of the community by helping create classes for needs of businesses and those students that have special requirements to reach their success. I've watched your strategic planning and all the things you do, and you should all be very proud. And I'm very proud to have this, thank you.
I told Dr. McIntosh she gets special points for driving from Colleyville at this time of the night and coming back. All right, we will move on to item number two on the agenda, public comment. None tonight. Then, our presentation on student success and administrative programs and projects, starting with the Northeast Campus, Dr. Darlidge.
Just a minute, before we do that, Mrs. Appleman, I know it's, the agenda says Northeast Campus first, but I have one other thing that I want to do before I call for Dr. Darlidge to come, and that's I want Dr. Joy Gates-Black to come to the microphone and show you the results of the wonderful gift that the board gave to us when you allowed us to use some of the funds that have been set aside for sticky spaces to help with student success in a more direct, and at this point, I should say, strategic and needful manner. And Dr. Gates-Black is going to show you the results of your generosity.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, Mrs. Appleman, members of the board. On behalf of the entire college community, I just want to express our thanks for your ongoing support of our efforts to increase student learning, student retention and student completion. Last summer, during the budget building process, you recognized the importance of providing greater support for first-time in college students as they transition to college and throughout their first year. As board members, you demonstrated your commitment to these efforts by voting to reallocate a portion of the funds initially identified for campus sticky spaces to support these efforts. Our initial plan, based upon that opportunity, was to hire additional advisors to support these students. But as we began to talk with students, faculty and staff, it became clear that the best strategy for increasing the success and retention of our first-time in college students was to implement a success coaching model. The goals of success coaching are twofold. First, to provide first-year students with a solid foundation that will increase student engagement, success and retention. And second, to assist these students in establishing an academic pathway through the college. The role of the success coach is to educate, to advocate, to mentor, to motivate and to connect students with the appropriate resources to help them to achieve their educational goals. The coaches maintain contact with the students and provide the kind of ongoing support that the students need. Thanks to your support, we have been able to make success coaching a reality at Tarrant County College, and we've done it in one semester. This effort would not have been possible without the dedication and commitment of a number of people, including Dr. Kimberly Beatty, the directors and assistant directors of counseling and advising on the campuses, and Ms. Ebony Alexander from our Human Resources Department. These individuals collaborated in the interviewing and selection process and in the development of an extensive training program for the coaches. With the funding provided by the board, we were able to hire 14 success coaches. As of today, 12 coaches have been hired, and I've invited them to the meeting tonight so that you can see who they are and they can share with you their thanks. These are the individuals who are going to work hand in hand in helping us to retain our students. So, thank you.
Thank you for that gift. President Appleman, board members, Chancellor Hadley, it's a pleasure for the Northeast Campus to do a presentation tonight on student access and success, and the topic tonight is cultivating a transfer pathway. The other co-presenters tonight are Dr. Magdalena Delateja, who is the Vice President for Student Development Services, and Ms. Shawanda Riley, who is instructor of English and also a faculty advisor for Phi Theta Kappa Group. One of our goals for 2013-14 at the Northeast Campus is to establish and implement a transfer academy. Of course, this is in support of Vision 2015 and is also one of the major components of the Coordinating Board's Student Success Points Model. Dr. Delateja and some of her staff members, specifically Dr. Kendoa Parent and Ms. Vanessa Jimenez, who are here tonight, and I'll have them stand up, have been instrumental in developing this transfer academy. So, I'd like for the two of them to stand up and be recognized. There they are. And she's here. Okay. We were waiting for Jennifer Blaylock, who is the Chief Services Officer for College Fish, and she's here tonight, I'd like for you to recognize her as well. Shawanda Riley worked with Jennifer to develop and write a grant proposal. That proposal was funded, it's a mini-grant to the Northeast Campus. And so, we became a partner with College Fish, whose goal is also college transfer. And you'll be hearing more about that later on from Shawanda and how it all ties into this academy. As all of us are aware, and many of us have seen this slide before, the state is now basing 10% of the state funding on student success points that colleges earn. These key measures are shown here. Of course, we have completion of developmental work, first college credit, the number of degrees and certificates, and what we're going to focus on tonight will be the transfer to university after completing at least 15 credit hours. So, how do we measure up in terms of transfer? On this slide, you kind of see the total transfers, and this is only for fall semesters so we can kind of make a comparison here, but the blue bars correspond to the total transfers each fall semester from all of TCC. And so, you can see the trend is up, and part of this is due to the fact that we increased our enrollments over that period of time, but we also increased the percentage of transfer students over that period of time. And the red bars correspond to the Northeast Campus, and we have a similar trend to that. The percent of the total TCC transfers from Northeast stays around 33%. So, our goal is to increase these numbers. And so, I'd like for Maggie to come up next.
Thank you, Dr. Darlidge. Greetings, President of the Board, Ms. Appleman, and board members and Chancellor Hadley, and we appreciate so much getting this opportunity to come and talk with you about our transfer initiatives at the Northeast Campus. And one of the things I want to mention to you, as you can see up here, we did create, by the Northeast Campus Advising and Counseling Transfer Center, a transfer academy this fall 2013. And the transfer academy is designed to help students transfer to a university. And we are working through the transfer academy to build a transfer-going culture by cultivating a transfer pathway. This transfer academy provides programs, sessions and events that cover the entire transfer process and each step of the process. Our Northeast academic advisors collaborate with area universities to encourage a transfer receptive culture. The transfer academy is composed of three main sections that highlight the transfer pathway for our students. We have the Transfer Essentials, which really covers the basics such as the core curriculum, degree options, application and admission requirements at the university, scholarship opportunities and support services at TCC to help students maintain a robust GPA. We have a Getting Interactive Panel that is made up of university representatives, and they teach the students about their academic and co-curricular offerings, so it gives them a chance to help the students understand what happens at the university when they transfer. And they offer success tips about transfer. And then, the other component is the Tour de Transfer that actually transports our TCC students to the prospective university for a walking tour of the campus. The transfer academy was marketed through our academic advisors and counselors and also our faculty using flyers. And as you can see, 85 students attended the Transfer Essentials Program, 44 attended the Getting Interactive Panel, and 18 actually took the tour of the university. We collected feedback from the students, and overall, the students were satisfied. And you can see that we had a pretty good overall satisfaction rating and good feedback from the students. A special carrot that we use to cultivate a transfer pathway is to offer one $500 scholarship. Only students who attend all three sections of the transfer academy are eligible for the scholarship. As you can see here, Matthew Harrison was really happy to be the winner of the fall 2013 $500 Transfer Academy Scholarship. He has completed 24 college credit hours at TCC with a 3.4 GPA, and he plans to transfer to UT Arlington and major in mechanical engineering. Our plans for 2014 include continuing to plant seeds so as to encourage students to start planning earlier for transfer. We're going to strongly encourage students who have already earned at least 45 credit hours to participate in the transfer academy, and we will require students to have at least 45 credit hours to be eligible for that scholarship. We will also enhance collaboration with the Cornerstone Honors Program, Phi Theta Kappa and area universities. We want to invite more university representatives to participate in the Getting Interactive Session, because we want to encourage a transfer receptive culture at the university. And we're also hoping that they will possibly earmark scholarships for our transfer academy students. And we will also continue to work with our faculty and also our student activities to increase the marketing of the transfer academy. Well, I couldn't get through a presentation without sharing some data, so here you go. This data slide shows the persistence rate at the university the next fall of Tarrant County College and Northeast students who had earned an academic associate's degree prior to transferring. As you can see, represented by the red bars, the persistence at the university into the fall, the next fall, for Northeast students who had earned an academic associate's degree prior to transfer was overall quite good, at about 78%. In comparison, our Tarrant County College Northeast students who transferred prior to earning an award had a slightly lower persistence rate. It was still good at the university into the next fall, it was about 73, 74%. So, what I want to do now, just to kind of highlight what the point we're trying to make, is show you a slide where both of those two slides are together. So, on the left side is those who persisted into next fall, and they had an associate's degree from TCC before they transferred. On the right side, that's where they persisted into the next fall at the university, but they had no award from Tarrant County. they had no award from Tarrant County College. You can see how important it is to help our students get that associate's degree before they transfer. And now, our next presenter is Shawanda Riley.
Board President Appleman, Board members, and Chancellor Hadley. It's an honor to be here to share details about transfer success with the Cornerstone Honors Program and the Northeast Campus' partnership with College Fish, a nationally-recognized completion and transfer tool that offers resources and free transfer resources to two-year college students. Cornerstone Honors Program offers student support in their transfer to four-year universities in a variety of ways, and we see this with the success of Anisa Mosher. She's a recent graduate of Tarrant County College. She graduated in 2013, and she was active as a student leader. She was president of the Student Government Association, and she was also president of the Cornerstone Honors Program. She was also a member of Phi Theta Kappa and used College Fish to help find scholarships as well as search for colleges that matched her interest in political science. After graduating with her associates last year, she began her studies in political science and government at Cornell University. Now, College Fish offers assistance to students who are interested in the transfer process as well as information on $37 million in scholarships and 2,000 senior universities. It was established in 2007 as an online resource specifically for members of Phi Theta Kappa. Now, it's funded in part by a grant by the Gates Foundation, and it's expanded its membership to include students who attend their strategic partner schools. The Northeast Campus became a strategic partner school in 2013, and as a result, the entire student body of the Northeast Campus has access to the resources that are available to College Fish, which are now free. That includes school and scholarship search tools, side-by-side comparison of potential colleges, and a transfer checklist. Now, this strategic partnership has strengthened the relationship between the Northeast Campus and Phi Theta Kappa, as well as potentially increased the number of students who complete degrees and certificates. Since we've only had the partnership for one semester, we're in the early stages of collecting data on the correlation between the numbers of students who pledged to complete and use College Fish for transfer and those who actually transfer and complete their degrees. Students who have used College Fish have transferred successfully to four-year schools, including University of Texas at Austin, Texas A&amp;M College Station, Texas Wesleyan, and Cornell, among others. Now, one of the benefits of being a recipient of the Strategic Partner Mini-Grant is that we're able to fund activities on our campus, including a free fish fry that we did in October. We had over 90 students sign up for College Fish, and they are now starting to use College Fish to find transfer resources. Also, as a recipient of the mini-grant, we're promoting College Fish and its features to our students, faculty, and staff. In addition, we provide a number of detailed transfer reports as a result of College Fish correlating the data for us, and it includes data on transfer searches as well as those who have completed transfer. Now, by piloting this program on the Northeast Campus, our hope is to provide a model for other TCC campuses with the ultimate goal of each campus being a College Fish strategic partner. Dr. Darlage?
So, when you hear that I've gone fishing, you know, don't worry about it. David Wells and I will be hauling in, we'll be hauling in students to bring into the college. Do you have any questions? Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Somebody would say that this is just a pilot on Northeast, and you're hoping to provide guidance to the other four campuses so that they can join you. So, thank you so much. We really appreciate the wonderful efforts that you're doing there.
Yeah, when we applied for the mini-grant, the idea was we would be the pilot, and then we would help guide the other institutions, the campuses, to become partners with us.
Very good.
And we have a copy of our printout that we'd like to...
Now for the applause. Ms. Riley and Dr. De La Teja, that applause is for you. In case you didn't hear it, we thank you for that.
And we recognize and appreciate the extra time and effort that programs like this require of you. Thank you very much.
And now, Ms. Appleman, our next presentation is about student success in a very different kind of way. Ms. Nina Petty is going to come forward now and present this program. One of the things that she says all the time as the Vice Chancellor for Facilities and Real Estate is that her main job is to save money for the college so that it can go into more student success efforts. So, Nina, you're on.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Appleman, Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Hadley. And yes, you took the words right out of my mouth, because it's always hard to come up here after you hear these great presentations about student success and talk about real estate. But I do want to remind you that the savings that we find and the efficiencies we do in the real estate, I just love it because I know it just goes right back into the mouths of our students. So, tonight, we're talking about energy and our sustainability programs that have been under the leadership of David Holkey for many, many years. Sometimes, we don't do a good job of really advertising some of those projects because they're not as sexy and exciting as some of the construction projects. But as we grow, it's not only imperative because of state mandated requirements, but because it's the right thing to do. A lot of our students these days are very green-focused and oriented, want to know what the college is doing in the energy areas. So, tonight, what we'd like to do is a couple of parts. I've got a lot of speakers that are a lot more knowledgeable about all what we do. And again, under David's leadership, last year, we were fortunate enough to attract Walter Williams, who you might remember I introduced a year or so ago and has gotten up at times. He's been with us now over a year. Walter is a mechanical engineer. He's got actually a bachelor's degree in physics and both a bachelor's and master's in mechanical engineering and has a lot of expertise in this arena. So, he is going to give us some statistics about some things that we've been doing. And then, we've got a couple of outside speakers, and then I'll be back up to wrap things up for you. So, I hope you find this interesting. Walt?
Thank you. Good evening. Good to be here. Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, and the rest of the board, we really appreciate this opportunity to come up and discuss some of the things with you that kind of show you the results of some of the things you've supported over the years. As Nina said, we have three presentations, brief presentations, that'll kind of illustrate what we do in the way of utility management and how that ties into our capital plan for infrastructure. The first people to go is going to be myself and David, and we'll talk about some statistics and some history, current activities, and future. Next, we have the city of Fort Worth here, their Better Buildings Challenge that we submitted an application to. And Sam Gunderson will get up and talk about that. And lastly, we'll have Chevron, Representative from Chevron, get up and give you a basic introduction to some funding alternatives and ways to possibly do some of that capital work using the savings that we can achieve on the utility side. So, with that, I will start our portion of it. Basically, what we want you to take away from here is to, just more information about statistically how our energy use goes. I know you probably know the big number, but the details of that number are, I think, kind of interesting, and I think you'll find them interesting, too. And all of that is with the point of kind of trying to get you to let us earn, you know, continued support of those programs, because we think they are very valuable to the district. The first slide shows an effort that we went through back last fall. If you look, it's got lots of colors here, but if you look at the gold line there at the top, that's $125 million. That represents the Systems Infrastructure and Engineering Capital Plan for the next seven years. So, basically, we identified that much work that needs to be accomplished, and that's in basically five different categories. But what drove those categories are our core goals, and those are increased life safety and security, enhanced the learning environment, reduced utility and life cycle cost, and environmental stewardship, which Nina spoke a bit about at the inception here. So, all of those reflect work that goes on to support those goals. The five categories from the left are safety and security, and just for example, code blue phones that you see, our emergency notification systems, anything like that to parking lot lighting, to upgrade our lighting to give that sense of security for our students and faculty and staff. Energy conservation, you've heard a ton about that. Examples would be building automation. You've okayed and approved numerous service authorizations and things to do that work within the last year that I've been here, at least. Lighting retrofits would be another where we go in and upgrade our lighting to save energy and enhance the educational environment. Kind of general infrastructure is the third, that middle column there. Air handler retrofits, upgrading our central utilities plant that send the cooling and heating around the campus. The fourth column is pretty self-explanatory, fire protection. That's our alarm systems, our sprinkler systems. And then, civil is kind of a miscellaneous drainage issues and things we need to do around the sites and campus. As we all know, the budget for that work in this fiscal year was reduced, and we want to keep up momentum. We want to keep the good things going that we have been doing. So, we started kind of looking at, well, what are the ways we could do that with what we've got? The green square up there kind of tells you what we came up with. About half the work in the categories of energy conservation and our infrastructure actually has a payback to it. In other words, if you do it, if you implement it, you'll get money back and reduce utilities and be able to adjust those budgets. The key there, of course, is how to monetize that, how to make that into enough money to be able to do projects with. And that's the kind of things that we've been exploring. Later in the presentation, the last presenter, Chevron, will talk a little bit about some of those mechanisms. My second slide here is, basically, shows you our utility expenditures. The time period we're showing there is a little bit funky. It's not a fiscal year, but what it represents is a study that we had done by a company called Clear Results. They took all of our utility data and crunched it and analyzed it in some of their tools and came up with basically snapshots of how we do, how we relate to other colleges, how we relate within the college campus by campus. And so, it's really telling. The pie chart there, well, let's start out with the big number, since we've talked about that. $8.5 million expenditure in that time period, and that's electricity, water, and natural gas. I think it's one of the biggest single-budget items that's not related to salary or labors in the budget or in our list of expenditures. The mix there, you'll see in the pie chart, we're heavily electricity-driven. We use 82% of that is electricity. Natural gas is kind of minor, actually, if you think about it in relation to probably what you pay for at your house and the proportion at your house. And the last one, water, is, that's the one that's actually growing. Everybody's aware of the drought conditions we've had and all the debates going on in the news about that kind of thing. But that's the one to keep your eye on. That's the one that's really escalating. The different columns there show each campus, left to right, from oldest to newest. Disregard the last three, that doesn't really apply. But we got South, Northeast, Northwest, Southeast, Trinity River, TREC, Opportunity Center, and MOC. And those kind of are intuitively what you would probably think. I mean, they're all of, if you just thought about the size of them and the age of them, the relativity of that size of that column or that expense, it's kind of intuitive. It kind of makes sense. What I want you to take away from this slide is to know that typically, your energy conservation industry would estimate you can save 10% to 30% of what you spend in utilities. So, just to kind of give you a ballpark on numbers, that's $850,000 to $2.5 million. So, somewhere in that range ought to be what? If we put our minds to it and put resources behind it, we can save?
Per year, you mean?
Per year, annually. Correct. This last slide in my part of the presentation basically shows you a more, I guess, salient way to compare campuses. In other words, we know some campuses are bigger than others, some have things going on that others don't. But this kind of equalizes or normalizes that into an index we call Energy Use Index or EUI. Okay? If we look kind of at the start there at the top, our district average in red there is about 119,000 BTUs per square foot per year. So, it's, if you can follow the denominators and numerators there, it's kind of a difficult concept, but it's an index. It's a comparative comparison of campus to campus. So, our district average is 119. If you look there, south and northwest are right on it. For whatever reason, they're right on that average. The outlier there, the interesting one, would be Northeast, which is, of course, the same vintage as South and about the same size. But it's, obviously, things are going better there in that regard. So, we're not exactly sure what's causing that, but we believe a lot of the strategies that we're talking about have been prototyped there, mainly through proximity. That's where the District Facilities Group is.
I was going to answer that for you, if you didn't know.
Okay. But we're going to dig into it even deeper and see, get some calculus going on it. The second thing that I thought was kind of interesting, or we thought, was the TR Campus has the highest index, as you'll see there, significantly higher than that. And that would, you know, the knee-jerk would be, well, that's less efficient, maybe and probably. But there are also some things that go on at TR that don't go on anywhere else, a data center, big parking garage that stays lit all the time. Lastly, as far as the specific campuses here, TREC or TR East Campus is the most recently designed from scratch. In other words, we had input into the design, and it's pretty good if you kind of look at it in comparison with some of the others. All that said, we use this to develop a goal for our program, and that basic goal is to drop that EUI down to 95, 95,000 BTUs per square foot per year, about a 20% reduction. If you kind of monetize that energy drop, we're talking about $1.5 to $2 million a year if we kind of create a range around that outcome. One thing, as we kind of educate and get into this further, just want you all to keep in mind that it's a moving target. You know, our rates change, we add square footage, so the whole energy thing is kind of a moving target that you have to just kind of accept that and hopefully understand it, but the numbers don't just stay the same forever. With that, I'm going to let David Holkey run the anchor leg here on this presentation, because my voice is kind of going. But he's going to talk about a little history, what we're doing now, and then where we're going, and we'll move on to the other ones, unless there's any questions for this portion. Okay? Thank you.
While David's getting ready, I do have a question. You have thrown out some savings numbers, millions of dollars, and you've identified how we can reach those savings?
We believe, I mean, we've done preliminary things and we've done specific...
Speak to the microphone, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I mean, we have a sense, I'd say, a thumbnail estimate on most all of those strategies that could be used, and we have some specific studies and numbers on some other ones. So, it's not fully fleshed out, but we're on the way.
President Appleman, Chancellor Hadley, and the rest of the board, I would like to kind of give you a little bit of a background where we are and some of the things that have happened the last couple of years. What I'm going to do is kind of compare fiscal year '12 over '13. And over those two years, there was a 245K savings in overall utility costs. Electricity was 144K, about 3.34% across the entire district, which resulted in 3.15 million kilowatt-hours of savings, quite a bit of savings there. If you want to look at it at cost per square foot, we're looking at electricity went down about 4 cents per square foot across the entire district is the way we'll look at that. Since 2010, well, we really got active in getting some additional help, other than just internal in our own procurement of energy costs and riding the wave of energy costs with natural gas and all the... with natural gas and all the above, we have lowered our kilowatt hour cost by fifty-two percent. That's huge. And we are looking at contracts now going into January of 2018, and this is the period 2015 through 2018, of four point eight seven cents per kilowatt hour. That's the actual cost of the energy, not the side of getting it here. So we're doing good. I was on the phone with the company that works with us before the meeting here. We're looking at the next two years out in the similar rates, and we're also looking at ten years out. So we're a large enough customer with a very large load base and stable, so we may have some real opportunities to kind of level and cap that for the long term. Water, obviously, it goes up. We're going up five to eight percent a year on water. Water is gonna become the next gold in this area. And as the population increases, the conservation efforts are going to help us tremendously. And just to show where we have saved, we have saved about twenty-seven million gallons of water in the last two years, and that's worth about two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It came in from advances in using computerized irrigation, that we have computerized routines to check for leaks. We've changed our water fixtures completely at our south campus. We're working on this MOC side and TCOC this year to finish them out. We're going for northwest campus, and eventually we'll go for northeast and southeast campus. We will make some big, big improvements in that. Now, talking about some of the things, if you see on the slide, they're building automation upgrades, are now poised to support even greater savings and allow for more efficient operations and centralized management of central utility plant systems. About a year and a half ago, I came to the board and requested money, I believe it was like a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars for doing upgrades to building automation in this facility just here today. Over the fiscal twelve to thirteen, just controls updates alone, sixteen point six seven percent savings in the energy consumed in this building alone. And there's a lot of things more we can do to go for the improvements. We've been in the process of doing boiler plant upgrades. The boiler plant upgrades with just changing out to the new equipment is about a ten percent efficiency improvement in the way we use the natural gas in the central utility plants. And when we couple it with good control strategies, it's anywhere between sixteen and eighteen percent. So there's, and we're achieving that, for example, at our southeast, our northeast campus today. We are approximately twenty-five percent reduction in our thermal energy utility distribution. So when we talk about heating and cooling, you've heard us talking about pumping increases, how to make these plants more efficient, to vary the capacity and capability efficiently with two or three buildings needed or the entire campus. And this took a lot of work, and we're getting there. Part of that, the lifecycle cost savings, part of it was removing over sixty leaking pumps, going with high efficiency pumps in the central utility plants, and the appropriate controls are starting to tie together. We have close to two million square feet of lighting that we need to upgrade across the district, tremendous savings in the lighting upgrade. We have alone, if you think about it, you've probably heard in the news, a T-12 light tubes are being outlawed, and you have to go to T-8s, et cetera. We alone have fifteen thousand fixtures with them still left in the district. So we have a lot to go, but a tremendous amount of savings replacing those. A typical return on investment on using the LED fixtures we're putting in the classrooms today, which meet all the energy codes and do everything that's required coming up, is between twenty-five and thirty percent, even at our very low utility rates today. So it kind of gives you an idea just how much effect it has on the overall bottom line in dollars. I talked about the water. The fixture upgrades, I mentioned that earlier, the twenty-seven million gallons. We are just about completed making improvements on the water treatment controls for our cooling towers. We have cooling towers on all of our campuses that we should start seeing reaping the benefits of about eight million gallons a year this coming fiscal year. Just about bringing them online as we speak. Working with Sam Gunderson and the whole city of Fort Worth, sustainability efforts, we have received rewards two years in a row for the twenty-seven million gallons of water savings, and we didn't even know that there was energy saving rewards as part of this, which next time we'll look for, for that recognition with the city and partnering. The very last one is something you probably heard a week ago Monday. You heard that an ERCOT said there was problems on the grid for everyone to conserve. Well, we are in a program called Emergency Response Service with ERCOT, and it's for the generation that we have that backs up the data center at our TR campus. In about three and a half years, we're gonna reap the benefits of being in that program of about three hundred thousand dollars combined savings and some revenue coming back. And on January sixth, we were called upon about seven-thirty in the morning to bring on those generators, and we removed about two megawatts of load off of the grid for the state of Texas, being a partner in this whole process. So, let's see, the next slide.
They've been telling the board what ERCOT stands for.
Sure. ERCOT stands for Energy Reliability Council of Texas, and they are the organization that sees the big picture in the state of Texas, how you get energy from one place to the other, and if there is overloads going on, how they reroute the power. Big job in the state of Texas. The next slide here are what are some of our current efforts. As we have made a lot of changes in the chill water distribution and piping, we're now ready to take advantage of high efficiency chillers. We plan to put in high efficiency chillers for base load at northwest and southeast this fiscal year, getting very good aggressive pricing as we're working through the process. We want to get into utilizing the continuing commissioning. All buildings tend to, I'm gonna use the term relax, they just start using more energy from things just being out of adjustment, et cetera. This concept of continuous commissioning is a very scientific, very detailed engineering approach at how you look at these systems and tune them back up. And they tell you about every five to seven years, you need to look at a building to go over this kind of process, because buildings just tend to relax, and no one has enough maintenance to keep them up continuously. No one does that kind of thing. At our south campus, we're getting ready to replace the electrical distribution around the campus. With the new Energy Technology Center that'll be presented a little bit later, our electrical loads go up tremendously. But this distribution upgrades will average loads over the periods. It'll be tremendous savings how we share it without being connected, and it'll provide us with greatly reduced electric rates to the tune of twenty million dollars. It'll be about one point two million dollars in twenty years just on the distribution side from Encore. And then there's reliability, the ability to preventative maintenance and minimize outages on the campus. You've heard several times, we've come to the board meeting talking about Schneider Electric Power Logic. You heard all that funky talk that we had asked for money for in the past. Well, what that really is, a measurement and verification system. We want to get to the point that we can measure the water, the BTU energy from heating and cooling, and the electricity in each and every building. Then we can start looking at these buildings and say, this building has a problem, and this building has a problem. These need to be the targets. Part of our initial high levels, how we chose at TR campus, has the biggest problems as far as energy consumption. We are gonna proceed to finish up, and we hope in the next couple of months, MOC and TCOC and the plumbing fixture retrofits, and depending on money available, finish up the northwest campus. All of the above is public awareness. It's important that people, the board, know that we are trying to be sustainable. We are trying to do the right thing for our environment. And we work closely with the finance department and pulling all these projects together, and ultimately, it's, we get down to capital. It takes capital to do these things. And a bunch of it, you get a very reasonable return. And we have many projects that we're working through this and know the returns. The lighting is huge. Chillers are gonna be, it's about a seven or eight year payback. All of these have a payback as we look at each one of them, and we look at them. Part of the prioritization in a district is, we're changing facilities, building things. So we have to adjust. We can't just concentrate on that one item. It's part of making the whole picture work together. Probably the best example right now is the SETC. As it comes along, we have to modify the power and chill water, hot water distribution, natural gas, all these utilities to feed through, to feed the facility, and do it very efficiently. Some of the other ones that aren't, so, people don't know much about power factor correction. This is how we use the power with respect to the power company. There's good savings there. We've already corrected a major part of northwest. We have another real sore spot we're gonna repair in southeast. The ones coming up, real important, northeast and southeast. Northeast has the highest cost of water of all the facilities. It's just the way it is. They buy it from the city of Fort Worth, through Terrent Regional Water District, and when we get it, that's the highest cost of water in the district, in northeast campus. Irrigation controls efficiency, we're gonna be looking at zones moving to more and more drip irrigation, a computerized upgrade so we can analyze more things remotely. We have weather stations on each campus that literally helps us determine every day and adjust the amount of irrigation. That's where you've been seeing some of these results and the changes in water. And then we're gonna be looking at other opportunities for the ERCOT programs to take advantage of the demand response, since we have a major part in the state of Texas and part of this. Any questions?
I can get this turned on. Is there, I know we're big, but is there a statewide buy board for energy?
There are some opportunities to buy through the state. We are doing this today through Texas General Land Office. We buy about ninety percent of our natural gas through the Texas General Land Office, and that, we approved that on a board meeting about a year and a half ago. And we are getting presently today about a seventeen percent savings over the cost of buying from Atmos, which would be through a commercial franchise agreement through the cities. That's how we were buying it before. And what's even, I find even more interesting is, in the last year, natural gas went up over seventeen percent on the wholesale market. And, you know, it fluctuates, and in a contract like we have, a ninety percent of it is tied to these fluctuations, but we were still seventeen percent below Atmos, and last year we saved about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the gas cost. Go ahead, please, sir.
Yeah, have you considered drilling water wells? You know, we know where the water resources are getting greatly deteriorated, and a water well could be a good investment.
I'm gonna tell you, I have not looked at that, but we're looking at some other water reuse issues. Terrent Regional Water District, city of Fort Worth are looking at reused water. DFW Airport today has like a twelve inch purple main that takes reused water to do irrigation in it. They're gonna be running that pipeline along the Trinity River, and we've already been working with the engineering firms and talking on the backside for our Trinity River East Campus, TR Campus, and we're looking at cooling tower irrigation, all the water features. So we've already put estimated loads in. They're talking about in the timeframe of about 2016 of bringing that line up here. There's also a push to bring a line out of the same plant going north, and we've already talked to them about routing it near our northeast campus, because when you have a landlocked campus like that, you have to rely on the utility, pretty much so. We have a pond there. The pond is planned for future irrigation out of that. We collect about seventy percent of the landmass of the campus flows into there for irrigation. We're looking at taking water from condensate from cooling the buildings. That's about ten thousand gallons a day. So we're looking at a lot of different things to bring this in. We have not, well, I'll take that back. We have looked at a water well. I pardon, you reminded me of that. We have looked at a water well at northeast campus as part of working with the drilling of natural gas that occurred on the campus. City of Hurst had put a number of stipulations on it, because obviously, we buy most of water from them, and it was, it was kind of real iffy and touchy how we could use it, and we wanted to use a reservoir there, the pond for it, and the engineer and the manager that were involved and are both retired and moved on, so we're gonna have to reapproach that coming up. The depths you get, the amount of water we need is about thirteen hundred feet, and the pumping cost is pretty high. So we've looked at all these as different ways of getting water. We think probably natural reuse, gathering these other areas, probably is a much more cost-effective way.
And what about solar energy? How are you incorporating that?
Well, that's a great question. I was reading just last night that they're saying that by 2020, the cost of photovoltaic energy is gonna be on parity with the, what you buy from a utility. And now, you have to realize, we're buying it lower than most people buy it, but the bottom line is, I think we'll be looking at in the next two to four years, and maybe some help with Chevron or whoever else we utilize, to see how we can utilize it better, whether the systems that go in roofs become, there's gonna be all kinds of partnerships to make that happen. I'm looking at it at my own home, actually, right now, so.
And lastly, I understand, and I'm not very knowledgeable, but there are some very, very high energy efficient, large systems for large buildings that have really good zone air conditioning and heating. You could heat one room and cool the room next to it, and you shut it off when people aren't there.
We are looking into all the above, using occupancy sensing. For example, the LED lighting system we're looking at will transfer across servers across the backend, and we're gonna be able to trigger all this type stuff with the lighting system we're specifying. And we had some, there was all discreet concept. What's nice about this, it's software. It's programming and pulling it together. It's a great thing. We're looking at, for example, our exterior lighting with computerized controls that we can allow them to dim a little bit when we don't need them, or dim them properly at night. We have two going on three test lots at our northeast campus right now, and our goal is to get most of south, depending on the budget, available, south and northeast completed on the parking lots this fiscal year. And then we'd look at northwest the next year.
Yeah, I heard from an outside contractor that they complimented TCC tremendously on your efforts and what the college is trying to do to increase energy efficiency.
Well, I think we're making a lot, striving real well. It's nice that we're, I'm able now to focus a little bit more on it and not just worry about, this building has to be efficient as we're building this and that, because we build the building as efficient as we can. Our southeast campus was lead goal primarily on energy. That's why we got the lead goal, was mostly on energy there. But we want to keep that up across the board, because this gives you the paybacks forever of these facilities.
I have a question. On the last slide, what constitutes an applicable site for the ERCOT?
It's your ability to control your peak demand, excuse, your peak demand, how much you use at a certain time. When, it's easy with generators. We're looking at a project to utilize a generator that's a spinoff from the downtown campus. And my gut feeling is northeast is the right spot for it. We're looking at a lot of issues, and we're gonna be talking about that. With these kind of paybacks now, with this Emergency Response Service, it's much easier to apply it in a project. You know you're gonna get your money back, and there's a lot of good PR. We're gonna be looking at doing for short periods setbacks of temperatures and chill water loops. When you have things centralized, you get this ability to do these tricks that give you some pretty darn good paybacks. Well worth it.
We can figure out how to get this thing on? It's a lot of electricity, but not yet.
It's still off, Mr. Carter.
Yes, okay.
There we go. I always use the example of the Prius, you buy a Prius, and you think you're saving so much money, but in fact, you spent so much more for the vehicle that you no longer had the vehicle by the time that you achieved the savings. So I'm wondering, at one point, you were talking about twenty-year payoff, and I have this vision of putting this expensive energy, things that will pay for themselves in twenty years and replacing them in twelve.
Well.
So I guess my question is, do you factor the life of these improvements as opposed to the?
Absolutely.
And what is the year, I mean, what do we find satisfactory? If we pay for it in ten years, twenty? You said fifty percent of it, I don't know what the rest of it is. I mean.
Mr. Carter, with the reality, each system thing you do has a different payback. There's no, I gave some examples, and I use, for example, the LED lighting as an example. And one of the things that's interesting about the LED lighting, and I was, my staff will tell you, I was, I didn't listen to it at first, because until I saw that it was, the engineering was right, everything was right, understood and felt that I could put my name on it for the district, I really didn't support it a lot. But when we look at lifetimes of a hundred thousand hours and maintenance percentages of failures down to one percent or less versus continuous on the existing fluorescents we use, continuous on the parking lot lighting, we have sections out, and we literally dedicate man years to this replacement. We just recently replaced all the facade lighting. We, we just recently replaced all the facade lighting around the buildings at Southeast Campus. The ROI was a hundred and twenty some odd percent. It was all incandescent lighting. It was put in back in the sixties. And now we have LEDs and if you, if you go out there at night, those are nine watt and twelve, and eleven watt LEDs around those buildings. Huge savings.
I guess that was, that was my main consideration that you, that the lifetime of these improvements actually is long enough.
Well, state law protects us.
Not even marginally so, but.
State, state law says you can go twenty years or the life expectancy of the piece of equipment. So we look at that in each decision we make as we move and then try to adjust. And again, part of it is working with the district that's moving and changing and adjusting all along. It, it, you, you just can't focus and say this is fixed because it, it's a moving, everything is dynamic. But it's a lot of fun doing it too.
Thank you, David.
And from here, we go to Sam with the City of Fort Worth. And we're delighted to be part of this process and showing the better side of what we do in one of the areas that's kind of hidden many times.
Thank you, thank you. That's why I wanted the board to hear from you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for letting me speak with you today. My name's Sam Gunnerson. I work for the City of Fort Worth. I'm the conservation specialist. And so I do internal energy efficiency work at the city, very similar to what you just heard at the, at y'all's facilities, as well as help manage the Fort Worth Better Buildings Challenge, which is actually what I'm here to speak about today very briefly. The Better Buildings Challenge is a voluntary initiative that the Department of Energy started. And it's, the point of it is to have a continued effect on the existing building stock of this nation. There were some stimulus funds that came out. And so the DOE was able to reach out into the nation, into the public and private sector to get out there and have an, an effect on the energy efficiency of those buildings. Because if you look at twenty thirty or twenty fifty even, most of the buildings that we're going to have are currently standing today. And so once those stimulus funds ran out, they needed to continue to have that effect without the funding to help do that. And so they came up with this voluntary initiative called the Better Buildings Challenge to do that. And it's been very successful so far. Over two billion square feet have been committed nationwide. You have private sector partners like Best Buy, CB Richard Ellis, Walgreens, people like that. And it's also, they have several public partners, which is what I'm here to speak about. So our mayor and city manager went up in two thousand and twelve to speak with the DOE in DC about the Better Buildings Challenge and decided after meeting with them that it was something that the city wanted to commit to. So we committed five point seven million square feet to a twenty percent energy reduction by the year twenty twenty from a two thousand and nine baseline. So similar to, just like the Best Buy and Walgreens and other partners that I mentioned, we did that same thing with committing that square footage to that energy reduction. But we also committed to a community partnership. So what that means is not only are we a partner, but as a public entity, we agreed to reach out into our community and get other public entities, private sector partners all across the board, anybody with any type of commercial facility to join with us and make those same reductions as, to work as one group. So this is a little different for the city because we had worked internally for quite a while, but we hadn't done any external programs. And so we had to put a program together to help us do that, which is, we called it the Fort Worth Better Buildings Challenge. Lack of creativity there a little bit, I guess, but copying the DOE's name. And we also took some things from their network with just putting Fort Worth in front of it. So what we did to, to form this network is we formed a group of local and allies, local allies and partners. So allies are organizations that don't necessarily have building stock, but that have other resources. So they can be financial allies or utilities or technical allies or connectors, which I'll go through a list of the ones that we have briefly in a second. And then partners are people that commit with us. So other, like I said, private sector or public partners all across the board that want to commit some building stock to that same reduction that the city has committed to. We did make it an energy and water reduction. The energy is that twenty percent by twenty twenty. The water is more loose depending on the, the site specific restrictions and such. But obviously, as you heard from the last presentation, water is very important. And we wanted to make it a public-private partnership, partly because of what people think when they hear of different public programs, but also because we feel like those are actually run a little better when you get the, the private sector involved. And so to that point, the Fort Worth BBC, as you'll see it referred to up there as FW BBC, is governed by an advisory committee that is made up of four city staff, but also eleven private sector representatives from those allies that I mentioned, from all different sectors. And the point of this was to, to form an all-inclusive commercial energy efficiency network. So where you could have people in the city that could talk down the street, to people down the street about financial opportunities and technical opportunities and things of that nature, rather than looking at case studies in LA or Chicago or wherever else they may be, where you're in a different climate, political climate, everything else. And so so far, you can see the allies up there, which is what we formed first. Again, three categories. We have the connectors, people to help us get in the doors, you can see in the top three. We have several different technical allies to help us find opportunities for our partners to have energy savings. And then we have the three utilities being electric, gas and water utility. And so far as well, you can see all of our partners up there excluding two that have been more recent. You can see several different sectors represented in those partners. And then we also got a commercial office space in Red Oak Ridge that's committed some square footage. And our most recent partner is actually the, the Tarrant County College District, which actually joined two days ago, which we're very appreciative of. That'll help join with us and, and learn from the city and help the city learn from y'all for what y'all are doing so that we can work as a group and learn from the allies as well as the other partners for things that we can do to, to save energy and be more efficient in several different ways. So that's just a pretty slide of logos there so I can take any questions that, that y'all have. I know I had to cover quite a bit very briefly, but I'd love to answer any questions.
I, I think I heard David Holkey say something about an award. Is it just a paper award? Does it have some money attached to it?
Well, that was actually with the water department, I believe. And also I can't speak to the one you've already received. As far as Fort Worth BBC, it will only be a pat on the back. I guess you could say there's, there's no money going in or going out. There's no cost to join, nor any, any incentives. I guess no, any financial.
Well, we get our pretty star up there.
Exactly.
So the taxpayers can see that we're cooperating with energy conservation.
And I do apologize, this was submitted before. Otherwise, y'all would certainly be on there, but.
Get it up tomorrow, right?
Absolutely. Actually, I gave a presentation yesterday, had a professional organization and y'all were on that already, so.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Lastly, we're going to hear from Jeff Howland with Chevron. Again, he's going to come and talk about some finance options and just ways like we talked about to monetize savings that we could generate.
Welcome from Chevron, Jeffrey.
Good to be here, Dr. Hadley. Good evening, Board President Appleman, Board members and Chancellor Hadley. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Again, my name is Jeff Howland and I'm with Chevron Energy Solutions. So we're going to shift gears a little bit and talk about a public-private partnership approach to getting some of these things done. And so the whole idea is to take the good work that has been done, to add to that and to add some more best practices to that work and to add a way of making it happen in an accelerated fashion so that you're getting it done in a compressed way, but focusing on the success and affordability and effectiveness of your, your mission. So what we're really talking about here is a, is a topic that's called Energy Savings Performance Contracting. And it's a way to collect and gather all the savings associated with the energy projects, the water projects, the operational savings, and bundle those into a finance vehicle that enables you to get the job done. So that's what we're going to be talking about. And again, I wanted to make sure that we know that we're going to be staying connected to your Vision two thousand and fifteen strategic plan in, in what we do. We, we see the, this, so everything we talked about thus far kind of loosely shapes into something called the TCC Facility Vision two thousand and fifteen. And we want to make sure we're in alignment with your strategic plan. We want to make sure that we're following all the technical guidelines that was described before. We want to make sure that we keep focused on your sustainability goals and in fact accelerate your sustainability goals. And the process that we're talking about, which is called, again, Energy Savings Performance Contracting, is in fact connected with your existing TCC policy statements for site management. So in other words, you already have that set up in your system. So first question is, well, why Chevron? Well, Chevron Energy Solutions is a division of Chevron. And we believe very, very firmly in the idea of energy efficiency, energy conservation and renewable energy as being as important as the other energy sources out there. So, and we've taken that mission and we've done about one point five billion dollars worth of projects across the country in the public sector. So that would be K-12, cities, higher education, and even in some counties. The other reason is that Chevron has roughly ten thousand employees in Texas. And so we are a part of your community. So we are interested in education. So we're interested in the, the community colleges and the K-12. Because that's kind of part of what we do. So that's kind of why Chevron Energy Solutions. So we propose to partner with Tarrant County College to deliver a strategy that helps really unlock and repurpose your savings and complete a lot of the projects that we've already talked about, along with adding additional projects, additional value, additional ways to drive performance. And make sure that we're improving the learning environment while we're doing it. The other important thing we would like to do, or we are contemplating doing, is trying to understand ways that we can link the project activity itself to relevant learning experiences on campus. So the work that we're doing, it involves science, it involves technology, it involves engineering. And we're right here. So the idea is how do we connect the dots between the work that we're doing on these projects to your learning environment, to your classes, to your instruction, to, so that the students can connect with that. That's an important part of what we're looking at. So Chevron, in this particular instance, proposes at this point to work as a construction manager at risk to bundle all these projects together along with your staff, side by side, and put this into a program that is funded. And then all these programs are implemented in a period of time, eighteen months, twelve months, whatever makes sense in terms of scope and scale. The key part also here is that we would help the district with getting rebates from the utility company, help with getting any other loans and money, monetary sources that may be out there to apply to the project. And also that we would act to guarantee the savings that come as an outcome of the project. So when we bundle up, whether it's two million, three million, whatever the number is in terms of savings, that would be something that the Chevron balance sheet would stand behind for fifteen years, twenty years, however long the, the program is. So, and the guarantee means that, a guarantee is a guarantee. So we would be here as your partner for that period of time, which is why we can connect the learning experience to it. So it wouldn't be a one-time thing. It would be something that we'd start and grow and build on. So here, the, the, the concept of energy savings performance contract works like this. And that is today you have a budget, which was already described and as being, I think, the second largest item on your list. Then the question is, is what if we can go in there and unlock some of the energy, utility and operational costs that are currently right now trapped inside your budget because of the way you're structured, because of the way your assets exist, because of the issues that we talked about? So what if we can go in there and unlock those, those items? And then repurpose those, those costs from your existing budget back into improving the infrastructure, improving the learning environment, putting together these enhanced learning programs that I'm talking about to bring the students on board and cover the total costs with those savings? And then if we were to guarantee those savings using, again, an instrument that's already in your code and it's backed by Education Code forty-four point nine oh one. So David Holkey was going to mention earlier in that conversation that there are protections within that code that, and that hold a company like Chevron accountable to a customer like Tarrant County for performance on the project, for guarantees on the savings and for other elements that are, that are critical for you. So that would be the, the approach. So in, in this partnership, this public-private partnership that we've been engaging in, we're kind of at the discovery stage. We're very early here. So we, our team, we've got, at Chevron, we've got, in Chevron Energy Solutions, roughly about three hundred engineers, but we've got about six to eight of them focused on your campus. And we've been engaged with the team for probably about four or five weeks now. And the idea there is to walk side by side with them into the plants, into the buildings, into the boiler areas, into the classrooms and campuses and help also quantify some of these things. So I think one question that was asked is, are, are there some things being done to identify the savings? And the answer is yes. We're in step one of doing that right now. And the idea would be to leverage what great work has already been done, which is great work, and also bring in more experience, more best practices, more best of breed from the things that we have done across the country in different venues, in different settings, in different facilities with different technologies. So we want to make sure you have a robust bucket of solutions. Then with that, we would come back and have another conversation and then talk about the idea of moving into a step two or step three. Right now, we're just kind of feeling it out to see how we can add value, what the possibilities are and kind of unlock some of these potentials. So Chevron has done this before. So we are currently authorized, if you will, by Choice Partners, by TCPN, Texas Cooperative Purchasing Network, Dallas County Schools in terms of being qualified to do this energy savings performance contracting work in Texas. The things that we do, again, we, we try to do it in a cost neutral approach. And when we get to the end game, we would be under multiple layers of oversight as a team to make sure that the project is, is right, the goals are met and the interests of the college are, are protected. So we said a lot and we're kind of closing in, but what I wanted to do was leave you with a little bit of what we've done. We've worked nationally, but in Texas, we've already gone through this process and have worked and partnered with in a public-private partnership with Houston Community College, for example. So they had similar issues, they had similar staff capabilities, similar, similar cost structures around energy. And we were able to work with them and identify fourteen million dollars worth of opportunity to reinvest back into the college. So what we mean by reinvest, we're talking about fourteen million dollars that they were spending anyway on their electric bills, on the water bills, on the gas bills. And we helped them redirect that. And that was over a fifteen-year period. So this is a fifteen-year package for them. We also have done a similar thing with El Paso Community College. And there, in this case, it's a six million dollar reinvestment where we, over a couple of phases of work, have gone in and dug deep, looked at lighting, looked at controls, looked at thermal storage, looked at load shifting, power factor correction, all the things that we talked about, and brought them to the table to get six million dollars in savings at El Paso Community College. And finally, we are working right now with Midland College to do the same thing. It's kind of under construction. This is one particular college where we are in fact rolling out LED lighting. David mentioned that as being now mature enough to deploy. Well, we're deploying LEDs across the board and on the outside. And the other interesting thing we're doing with them is a cloud computing solution where we're helping them take literally all of their drive, desktops and servers off their grid and put it into a cloud service, which saves electricity as well as licensing costs and refresh costs and all the costs you can imagine with the IT operation. So that's the experience we've had. On a go-forward basis, again, we are working to shape the opportunity, working to shape how we can work together, what's there to build on what they've already done. So the goal there is to thoroughly integrate our team with what they're doing. We also are going to be looking to evaluate ways that we can enhance the educational process. So on my team, I have an educator who used to be a teacher. And she will come here and we would like to at least interface with your curriculum people to kind of figure out, okay, so how do we plug this STEM opportunity into a living lab, into real teaching moments, if you will, with the kids? So that's work to be done. And then we want to finalize the opportunity assessment, come back and present our findings and then make a decision from there. And we are excited about the opportunity. We look forward to working with you. And we are excited about the opportunity, we look forward to working with you. Something tells me I'm going to get a meeting from the better, from the better buildings' people to join their team. So, thank you for the opportunity. Are there any questions?
What's the timeline on presenting?
Well, right now, we, we put an initial timeline of 16 weeks together, and like I said, we're about four to five weeks into that, we had the holidays and so forth. So, I would say we've got another six weeks to go, maybe.
And the cost to the college?
So, good question. So, this, back in that graph that I showed you, I'm telling you that we're in step one here, which is the opportunity assessment, that's no cost. So, that's exploratory, that's unlocking opportunities and seeing if there's a way that we can work together. How can we bring a public-private partnership to do the things that we just talked about? So, right now, it's just exploratory, and there's no cost. And if we decide that it does make sense to work together, then we begin, we begin to build, you know, scope, cost, structure into the project to go make it happen in step two and three. So, we, we really don't know what that is yet. It all really depends upon what are the elements of the project that we build together, how much savings we generate, the technology that's brought to the table, cloud, no cloud, LEDs, no LEDs, even solar, that was mentioned as well. So, we do renewable energy. And matter of fact, we've got 22 megawatts of solar right now that's generating electricity on our customers' property. So, we would look to see if we can deploy that kind of technology. So, we don't know yet. Phase, phase one will help us in phase two define that.
The other thing I'll add, Mrs. Appleman, and board members, is that once the phase one is complete, the opportunity assessment, it'll really be up to us to determine what parts, all a part of that assessment we may want to undertake, you know, all or none. And that also would drive the cost of what we wanted to do. Now, naturally, they would like, and I know our staff would like to, for us to consider everything, at least in a phased-in scope, but that would be a board's decision at that point.
And most of these did do it in a phased, phased, phased approach, phase one, phase two, phase three.
I didn't see, you don't have San Jack up there?
Yeah, San Jack, we did the, the phase one part. And when we got to the end, we made the determination that the work that they were already doing, plus the work that we added to them, was, was, was a project that had the size that they could handle, because they had some resources that they just came across, if you will. So, we passed on to them to complete that.
Good, very good.
Thank you very much.
Nina?
I just want to thank you for your patience on a topic that can be complicated and difficult at 7 o'clock at night, there's a lot to it. I think you see the passion of my team. I know David Holkey was in an engineering place in the sun answering your questions, because it's what he does best, and you can see and hear his passion along with Walt. So, they make a great team together. I feel very blessed and fortunate to have them putting together all these great things about what we're doing. And I think Chevron brings a unique opportunity to the table, particularly in the funding area. So, we're eager to get through their study and hear what they have to say. So, I just open it up to any questions you have of me or any of our team in regard to all the wonderful things these folks are doing.
In last fall, we approved an agreement with A&amp;M to do what sounds to my lay-in mind, similar assessments. And I know it's almost time to renew that relationship. What, how does this program factor into that, mesh with it, delay it, cancel it?
Great question. We actually have an item that we are proposing to you to approve, and we'd like to bring it back to you in February with A&amp;M. Last March, you approved a program to work with A&amp;M. What they have is a, it's called their Engineering Experiment Station Energy Systems Lab. And they really are the nation's preeminent research and application institution in the field of engineering study. And this is really Walt's kind of baby bringing this to our attention, and it's a nonprofit. So, all the money that, we've done a study, have not paid them in the original study. And what we're looking at is implementing recommendations on their, implementing the recommendations that they've made. Any monies that are paid are, go back into their program. So, what, I think this is a very holistic approach with what Chevron is recommending with us tonight. So, you're really dealing with an educational institution, and I think as a community college, aligning with somebody like A&amp;M, who is the preeminent research group in this area. And what they specifically do, it's very tactical in nature in what they're doing with us, and it's around measurement verification. And candidly, it will help us evaluate Chevron's study and proposal as we move forward with them. The recommendations that we'll present to you next month will provide an annual savings of around $367,000. If we implement them in February, we probably can capture just under $100,000 between now and August 31st. And that's very specific tactically towards the Trinity River Campus. So, we would like for you to consider doing this holistic approach with both Texas A&amp;M and Chevron. And again, we feel like having both groups at the table helps us internally be smarter in evaluating the Chevron opportunity, which is a business model, which is, it's a different model than what A&amp;M is offering us. And if you have more specific questions, I know my team will be able to answer them. Did that help a little bit?
Well, I, I guess to sum up, it's complementary, not competitive.
Absolutely complementary. And our team believes strongly that the work we're doing with A&amp;M makes us smarter in evaluating the business model that Chevron would bring to the table. So, I think that's a very important step.
Have we been in touch with Houston and El Paso?
Yes, we have actually, Mark McLendon has reached out to the community colleges' finance departments and spoken with each of his counterparts in regard to what they've been doing. And I don't know, Mark, if you have anything you'd like to share in that regard?
I'm a finance person, and finance person are, we are...
We know, Mark.
So, I did talk to, I did do our due diligence, and I talked to the CFOs at El Paso, I know them very well, and we also talked to Midland College. Midland College is basically starting, El Paso, Josette has explained to me. HCC, I don't have the same context, because they've changed some of their staff. What, what they tell us...
And their board members.
Yes, maybe, maybe some board members. The way that the finance people will look at it is, we, we will see the results, and then we'll see what everything looks like and how the numbers fall and everything. That's what all the CFOs have told me, and that's, that would be the same approach that I would take, ma'am.
The savings numbers that we saw, and then we heard the words 15 to 20 years, so the millions of dollars is a projected savings over that period of time from those two colleges. And so, I think what I would want to know, when, before we move on to the next phase, if we decide to move on to the next phase, is what the contract costs are between the community colleges and Chevron.
Well, the, the, the picture is the following, if, if I can give you, I'm going to give you the, the financial perspective, not the engineering perspective. What they do, ma'am, is basically they say, this, this is the, where you have to make that determination on it, is they will look at an improvement, okay? And so, improvement can be seven years, 15 years, or 25 years. And they will say, if you do this improvement, you will have so much savings on that improvement. And they'll take that improvement, and they will guarantee the savings. This is what Chevron does. They'll say, I will guarantee you that if you do what I say that you do, and, and from, how you say, from an operational perspective, ma'am? And so, if you do that, I will guarantee you that at the end of the day, throughout the 15 years, you will get that savings. So, they're saying with that delta of the savings, and, and, you know, I'll illustrate a point when we go to the financial statement, because I, I read my things on the balance sheet, that, that's my world, right? So, what they're saying, if you have a savings over 15 years, your operational cost goes down a little bit, right? So, that money that you're saving, you reinject into your system. And what they're doing is that they'll help you determine some of the processes, and at risk, they'll help you with some of the contracted, or they'll take some of the contract on themselves, and we would have to go out and get the money to pay for this. We're paying for it. Nobody else is paying it. We, we are definitely, TCC will pay for that. But if you look at that over 15 years or 20 years, depending on the item, then you will have that, that savings and that's, that less operational cost in your fund balance or in your operational cost. You can take that money and repurpose it to other things. That's the model, ma'am. Just, did I explain it?
Perhaps one other thing you might add is that whatever the cost is for retrofitting, if you will, or looking for it, we can either pay out of our budget, which we don't have, we could borrow the money on our own...
That's right.
Or the Chevron has a financing instrument, the money will go through them, and we would not have the debt. It would be theirs, and we would pay back, we have the debt always.
Right.
But not on our books, we would pay back, but it's on our books, I know. We don't go borrow the money, I, no, Mark, I know.
Sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry.
But the, 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 the service of the loan would be paid from the savings, and then the college would get the balance of what's left, and it would have to be equal to what Chevron promised we could recoup by state code. So, that's something important for the board members to know.
Yes, ma'am. That, what that means is, from a, from a financial purpose, is that if we take an X loan, it's the debt service on the loan, you will be pay out, out of savings in that fiscal year. That's what it means.
And have some left over.
And, and the whole idea is to have money left over to repurpose that money into your operations, but the...
We need a motion to move forward with the...
No, it's just, it's a no cost, ma'am.
It's a no.
No cost.
Madam President, before we move on to the next item, I, I want to add my appreciation, along with Nina's, to the board for being so attentive this evening. Mr. Gunderson, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate having you here to help us out. Mr. Holland, thank you so much for coming from Chevron to help us understand what we can do. And I want to give the, the largest appreciation to our staff, our in-house staff. You have to be impressed with what they're doing, with the knowledge and the passion that they bring to this. And it's very good for everybody to hear this, because very often, we don't think about all of the back-house operations that are necessary to really run this institution. Our major focus is on students and student success. But in order for them to be successful, we need all these other moving parts behind the scene. So, thank you so much, Nina and team, for this outstanding presentation tonight, and thank you, board members, for being more knowledgeable now.
Indeed. All right. Moving to item number four, we have three sets of minutes, which you had received previously, and I would ask approval of each of them separately. So, the first one would be the, the minutes of the November 15th, 2013 meeting, motion to approve. Second, any discussion? Those in favor, aye, please. Did you get that, Mr. Carter and Dr. Morrison? And then, the meeting of November 21st, 2013, motion to approve. Mr. Carter? Second, Dr. Morrison, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. And finally, the meeting of minutes of December the 4th, 2013, motion to approve. Ms. Vandergriff? Second, Dr. Morrison, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Moving on to the consent agenda, only two items. One, the consideration and approval of the reappointment of the chancellor to the City of Fort Worth Tax Increment Finance District, number nine, and I guess we'll take that in consideration and approval of the reappointment of Vice Chancellor Mark McLendon to the following tax increment finance districts, City of Benbrook, number one, City of Keller, number one, City of Grand Prairie, number two, City of Fort Worth, numbers three, four, six, eight, 10, 12, and 13. Move approval of the consent agenda by Dr. Morrison, second, Mr. Heed, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Committee reports. Mr. Carter, Audit and Finance? Governance did meet and approved the agenda. Institutional planning, Ms. Vandergriff?
Yes, thank you. We did conduct an institutional planning committee meeting on Tuesday, and we were located at the Salvation Army Arlington Core, where the North Texas Youth Education Town is situated. And so, let me just say, on behalf of all those who attended, really appreciate the effort to be there. What this is, is Super Bowl XLV in 2010 in Arlington, the NFL provides a contribution to their legacy project, which is Youth Education Town. So, the Arlington Core received a million two from the NFL, and then it was matched by Jean and Jerry Jones Foundation at a million dollars, possibly a million two, I can't remember. But nonetheless, it's, the facility is built and ready to go, and we have been researching a partnership in terms of providing some CE courses and whatever that will look like. So, Troy Vaughn and Margaret Sutton have been very much involved for a few months, and it was great to have a fam trip there. I have to say that those who participated in our meeting, more or less, and the tour, were starstruck with the academic powerhouse that walked in, and that would be our chancellor, Dr. Coppola, Carrie Tunsen, Troy, Angela. We just had a number of representation from Tarrant County College, who knows how to get it done, and knows what this community needs, and as well as their community. So, it was a fam trip, we're in research and development, more or less, and that will roll out at some point, I guess with the recommendation from the IP Committee to the Board as, as we go ahead. So, thank you all for being there, and really appreciate it.
It was great.
They've accomplished quite a lot there, and will apply the acid test to the proposals, and hopefully can work with them in providing some services to their community.
One thing Mrs. Vandergriff didn't add, that this is another $1 a year event for us, you know, we love those.
And special thanks to Mrs. Vandergriff for a lot of above and beyond time working on this, on our, representing the college. We appreciate it. All right, item number nine, consideration and approval of indefinite delivery indefinite quantity pool service authorization agreement with Dunaway Associates to provide excess property inventory. Ms. Hadley, Ms. Pitti?
Nina has two items tonight, one, one little one and one big one.
Only two.
That's right, okay.
That's right. The first one is for $386,386.35 for an authorization agreement with Dunaway Associates to provide excess property inventory, which includes a number of things that is in your board memo, and also in the summary. We've never undergone a study like this, so we're excited to actually have this. And I know the Dunaway folks, two of their principals, Alan Moore and Chris Wild, are here tonight, and have started this project out at the Northwest Campus. We sort of started a beta test before the holidays, but this is requesting for the whole scope of services to have this done, and we're asking for approval, and they're here. Gary, Gary Prather is leading this project for me, and if you have any questions about what we're doing, we're here to answer them, but we're excited about getting this done.
This will provide a market value, present market value, as well as...
On parcels, we are incorporating a marketing piece with it, that will, the whole goal is to be able to assess our properties and know where all our easements are. You know, we do a lot of drilling with the oil companies and understanding what, what parcels at each of our campuses are available for development, and which of those parcels have the most marketability to ultimately, so, yes. And there, I think there was a, an error in the summary memo that we have corrected, and you should have the correct one. We actually left out the Southeast Campus in it. It is a district-wide project, and all campuses are involved, including the Mayo and Center too, and the Opportunity Center too.
The report, Mr. Carter, is...
The report, not what?
And now, but this one is going to come to you...
Yes.
For the board, we've been talking about this for a while, wanting to know exactly what we have, and what perhaps is available for our thinking about public-private partnerships, or what we want to do, short-term, long-term, with all of the properties that we own. So, it's, it'll be a report to the board for you to consider, probably... So it'll be, it'll be a report to the board for you to consider, probably we'll, we'll go first maybe to the, to Mrs. Vandergriff's committee and then come to the full board.
And again, we're excited about it from the real estate department to have documented, accurate records of our real estate because we really don't have them at all anywhere. And so really, in the past years, you've seen me get up and talk about each of our campuses and what we have, what we think is developable, what isn't, what's landscaped, what's not. This is really going to shore it up in a very professional manner, so. And they have a lot of capabilities, Dunaway, they were chosen out of our pool. There's a number of reasons why we chose them, you know, they've been in this market almost sixty years and they have something, they're working, doing a lot of work with Cook's Children's, but they also have a GIS database system that is very automated, that's going to allow us from a technology standpoint to access this information in a much easier way than on Platts and, you know, big maps and, so we're excited about that. They actually have people in their office that do this work and that's unique to them, not any of the other companies that we looked at brought that to the table, so. And they will have an MWE participation in this project too, so we're excited about working with them. We haven't worked with, I have not worked with Dunaway in the four years that I've been here, so they've been in our pool and we evaluated all the groups in the pool and felt like they were the best one qualified to do this work.
Okay, and in your opinion, this is a reasonable price?
Absolutely.
It seems like a lot of money, but...
You know, it all adds up. We did, we worked with them very closely on getting the pricing down and they'll bring, be bringing entitled companies and the market valuation piece to add to that also. So there's a lot of moving parts on it and we've got a lot of real estate, it's over three million square feet of real estate that has a lot of nuances to it, so. There's a lot of work that's going to go into it and particularly in the downtown area too, so that's a big piece. We've got seventy-five acres downtown, that's a lot of acreage. I keep saying we're the, I think we're the second largest, just behind the Bases, so. We own a lot of real estate and we need to get a handle on, on if we want to market it and then, Mr. Carter, it's up to you to decide what you want to do with it, but if we're going to enter into any public-private partnerships going forward, we have to have this information, so it's required. And the nice thing is it'll be automated and it'll be on the computer where we'll be able to access it and I'm sure the Dunaway folks as we move forward would love to give you a presentation on their GIS system because it's cool, so.
And all of this information is, is on your computer in your board packet, so if you want to refresh yourself. But at this time, I will take a motion to approve the awarding of the contract to Dunaway and Associates. Mr. Heed made the motion, second.
Second.
Dr. Morrison, any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, item number ten, consideration and approval of guaranteed maximum price contract with Archer Western Carcon JV Construction at Risk CMAR for South Campus Energy Technology Center.
I'm not going to stop anybody in the room from jumping up and harruing for this contract to be going forward because I know we've been talking about this project for now fifteen years.
Our DCC president is way right.
I know, I see her, yeah.
No influencing the board, please.
So we are asking for approval for the CMAR Construction Manager at Risk contract with Archer Western Carcon and they are in the room today. We have both representatives from Archer Western and our MWE joint venture partner in the back, if you wave, Tom Birkenmeyer and Arsilia Acosta with Carcon and John Hamilton are all here and excited to be at this point in time, the contract's for thirty-three million two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars and we're hoping that you will approve it and we are hoping that it will get signed tonight or first thing in the morning because we are ready to rock and roll. We've got thirteen months of construction, tight schedule, a lot to do.
Motion to approve.
Still moved.
Mr. Greenhill, second.
Second.
Mr. Carter, any discussion? Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Solid yours.
Yahoo!
Very good.
I, I do want to mention that we...
Dr. Jordan is clapping very loudly back there, absolutely.
I do want to mention that we have district goals for our minority women-owned business enterprises at twenty percent, but we have a stretch goal. I know Andre Lee Kewin has been working very closely with this joint venture partner here and has a stretch goal for thirty percent on this project and we're really excited about some of the mentoring and the things that we've talked about doing with this joint venture partner, so we're looking for some really good, exciting things out of this group, so thank you very much.
Welcome aboard Archer Western.
I hope you figure out a way, by the way, to demolish the old building cheaply. The old building, I hope you can figure out a way to demolish it.
Are we going to demolish it or repurpose it?
I think it's going to. Is that building going to be demolished? I thought it was demolished. Are we tearing that building down, the old one? I thought we were.
It's a store. In about a year, it's going to be a store.
You mean it was in such terrible shape that we need to replace it, but now that we, we're going to replace it, we're going to keep it? Is that what you're saying? Oh, I see.
Okay, Mr. Marshall, you're up.
Item number eleven, consideration and approval of a three-year Cisco maintenance agreement renewal purchase with Flare Data Systems. Mr. Marshall.
Thank you. Thank you board, thank you chancellor. This is for maintenance on our audio and video conferencing system for the entire district. The year-by-year costs are locked in, if we provide the vendor with a partnership agreement with a three-year pricing model as opposed to going year after year after year, even though this year's annual cost or the annual cost for each year is fifty-three thousand, which is typically not something we bring to the board, we will be securing an agreement though that's over the hundred thousand dollar limit for, for the three years. So the, the total amount for the maintenance for audio and video conferencing, maintenance with Cisco, for Cisco equipment with Flare Data Systems is for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-three cents over three years.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Heed?
Seconded by Ms. Vandergriff, any discussion? Questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. McClendon, the financial report.
There you go, okay, okay. We decided that this evening, you want to go with revenue first, man? Revenue. Revenue. That's cost, sorry. It's the other page. No, it's the other one. No. I want the revenue. Just a second. You had it, you had the last one, just go back to here. Go back to your sheet, show. No, no, that, the sheets doesn't lie. No, that's the last sheet, not here.
You want to talk while she finds it, Ma?
She's going to find it right now. That, I want you to do that, okay. Oh no, that's not, you don't have revenue. We'll just go to, go to the other revenue, go to the page, I'm sorry, we, we don't want to take, we want to welcome everybody back from the new year and, and we want to make sure you get all the information because I know that this is one of the highlights of, of the evening. It is for me, it is for me, I love this part. Okay, you got it, you got it, okay. Okay, thank you very much. I will, I'm actually going to tie into what Nina does and everything. All right, so we, when we look at our revenue, the way that we, we, we try to analyze it is we take the total months, we divide it, and so right now we look at any expenditure that is over forty percent. Now the revenue, this is one of the organizations that has the most stable revenue and it's calendar-driven, whether it's coming from the, the tax entity or the coordinating board, so we're very good. I just wanted to highlight one item, point to the two hundred and three point four percent. Keep going up, just go up, that's the interest, okay. I want to take the credit for all of the... You should not be surprised, what happens with the interest is when we have the fair market adjustment, that's why it, it, sometimes you will show a negative and the other times you'll show a positive. We, that's what gives that, that big movement. It's not that the market has changed, so when we get through the, when you look at the, the investment that we have and what are the rates we are, I just don't want you to think that all of a sudden we have done something miraculous or something to get a two hundred and three percent return, that's, that's not the case. So I just wanted to highlight that. Now, now we can go to the, now we're going to go to the expenses. And so what we're going to look is all the items that we have on the expenses and what, if you look at the first item, it's showing fifty-three point four, so I'm going to walk through each one of them. And the video support, we are actually seeing, we have some prepaid expenses, not so quick, just, okay, we have some prepaid expenses that, that shows, and we also have some encumbrances. So what that means is we're, we're covering for more than one period, okay? For information and technology, can you go up? Okay, all the way to the top? Top, 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 okay, there we go, okay. So the technical, this is page two. Okay, okay. That's, okay, well I'll just go with what we have. So anyways, on the video support, we have, again, those are prepaid expenses and we have encumbrances. On the next one is, no, no, make it a little smaller. I, I guess, okay. On the technical processing, again, we're sitting on forty-seven point two and that again is we have, on that one, we have some encumbrances. And so what that means is the way that accrual is we're covering for more than one period, okay? Okay, so the next one is if we look at central plant, custodial services, warehouse, all of those, what they're doing is if you notice, we have a, a larger amount of encumbrances that are covering than more than one period. On insurances, we, we may have policies, we actually have, the reason why it's showing a hundred and four percent is we will not only have a policy that covers more than the fiscal year, it could actually cover throughout the end of the calendar year. So that's, that's why you're showing higher percentages of spend because you have a mismatch and because we, the way that, I always remind everybody that modified accrual accounting, it does not look at expenditures on a monthly basis, but it looks at, at it on budget years. So that's why if you go ahead and prepay it, you're going to show that. Now the one item I wanted to, just so that you can connect to what Ms. Petty was saying, if you look at utilities right there, you'll see that just like David mentioned, eight point nine million dollars, that's that figure, that's where that's coming in from your expense statement and what they're saying is we've expended one point eight, but we have encumbrances for six point three seven. So that means if you read that line item, you would say, I've expended ninety-two point four percent of my budget, but what that means is it's covered for the total period of, of the, of the fiscal year. So that's, I thought that, that would be a number that you would enjoy seeing and you would see it there. Let's see, do we have anything else? And that's about it, but if we look at our total expenditures, just go to the bottom line, bottom, all the way to the bottom, bottom, bottom. We're looking at, okay, okay, if we look at our total, no, keep going, more, more, more. Okay, so if we look at, that was your income, no, okay, we're looking at, okay, you need to stop on thirty-seven point six. Okay, okay, okay. What we're saying is that, I'm sorry ma'am, I know.
Just tell us what it is.
Okay, I'm sorry ma'am, if you look at your total expenditures, we're sitting on thirty-five point seven and we're looking at things over forty percent, so as, as a district, we're under the amount. And on the revenue, now if you want to come down, okay, you're going all the way down, there it is, we're sitting on forty-five percent, forty-five point seven. So if you looked at it, our revenue situation is a lot better and our expense, expense situation is lesser, so I, I think that speaks for, for a really good position. Now we can go to the investments.
That's good.
Thank you chancellor, okay.
I didn't say that I was your board, ma.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you ma'am, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, you'll have to make it a little bit bigger. Okay, so if we look at our cash, at the end of December, we went ahead and received about fifty-three million dollars, we spent thirteen, so the net effect is we added forty-one. So our, our cash is right now sitting, our total, our cash, our pools, we're sitting on about a hundred and seven and our long-term, our, long-term, twenty-nine, so right now we have a cash balance of two hundred and thirty-six million, if you want to come down just a little bit more. If we compare ourselves to the thirteen-week T bill, we're actually better because it's, it's, it's seven and we're sitting forty-five, point four-five better and it's point four-three. So, any questions on the finance or on the investments?
Great way to start a year.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you, thank you Ma.
Chancellor, support.
Madam President, board members, I want to start my report with a salute this evening to Dr. David Allen Wells. David, I think you should stand up behind the podium while I talk about you.
Stand up and face it.
Stand up and face the... I, I sent, I sent an email to all of the employees of Tarrant County College, I guess about five o'clock this afternoon and it's, it's entitled, has a picture of David on it and living color and it says, "A big shout-out to Dr. David Wells, Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs." And I wrote quite a bit of information. I know people don't like to read a lot, but I thought it was worth writing and I think most people will enjoy reading because some of you probably don't have any idea about the long tenure that Dr. Wells has had with the college, almost thirty-five years that he's been with us and the number of different things that he's been called upon to do for the college and so I outlined some of those things. One of the things I really wanted to put in here, and I couldn't grab the number as, as soon as I needed to, David, and that was I really wanted to know just how many millions of dollars have come through the community campus under your leadership. What I did say in here, which is true, that the majority of those dollars, the grant dollars that we've gotten have come through our community campus of corporate services and continuing education. But it was nineteen seventy-nine when David saw the light, you know, he, he thought he'd been seeing the light time from time, but he learned about Tarrant County Junior College, came for a visit and saying, now I've really seen the light. So he came here and, and worked in our continuing education department on the Northeast Campus where he ran, he was director of continuing education and later he was called upon to head the entire continuing education work throughout the district. And under his leadership, the community campus has grown into a major part of the college and I suppose the thing about which I'm most proud, in addition to all of that money, we have really become a seamless operation between the community campus and the regular academic program, which we all know is so vital to the success of so many students because so many of our students come here and they think they can't do very much. They finally get off the nerves to take a non-credit course, they realize how smart they are and we've figured out ways to help them transition into the academic side of the house. And so for a number of years, he, he led that institution, that, that group of work for us. And last year, one of the things I really like to brag about, last year, this past year, we served over eight thousand students in adult basic education and English as a second language and that is just absolutely an awesome thing because we know how high the, the non-literacy rate is in Tarrant County and Tarrant County College has done so much to help erase that under David's leadership. The second thing that I highlighted in my email was the outstanding work that David gave in leading the beginning phases of the Trend River East Campus for the health professions as you, those of us who've been here for a long time know that he was at the forefront of leading that great effort and that campus now is one of the thirteen must-see sites in Texas, so that's, that's very good. And then of course, Dr. Joy Gates Black got it started with Achieving a Dream, but immediately David Wells as the Academic Affairs Leader jumped right in and he enjoyed, co-led that effort pretty much hand-in-hand through... effort pretty much hand-in-hand throughout the implementation. And we're at a point now where we are really on our way to doing some very different kinds of things with Tarrant County College and the academic programs that we offer our students. I just got a note from Dr. Terri Day this afternoon, and she sent me data and said, I thought you might want to know this, and the main thing she said was, "We increased the number of degrees and certificates awarded from 2012 to 2013 by 27.5%." Now that is just awesome, just awesome. And of course, David was a major part of that, and he also co-led the massive effort in spite of all of the discussions that we had around the district about the academic master plan or the facilities master plan. And that was quite an undertaking, and David co-led that along with Nina Petty and came up with what we think is an absolutely outstanding institutional plan, one that is going to help guide us into the future so that everything we do is really tied to our real basic needs and what we think should come first and second and third, give us a great priority. So thank you so much, David, for that and all of the other wonderful things that you have done for Tarrant County College. David has promised me for a while that he was going to bring me some fish. When he goes, he goes fishing, and now I know that he's going to retire, I know he's going to have time to fish a little bit more, and, and I'm going to get my fish. So I want all of us to join me in giving David an absolutely outstanding round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you, David. You want to say something? You can say something now, say something again at the reception.
I will, I'll just tell you that everything that gets done here gets done by a lot of people, and we have a really great leadership team, a really great group of people who work at the college, and we're led by a super board. Everything that gets done, gets done by all of us together, and I just appreciate the opportunity to have been a part of this. So I've got two more board meetings to go, so.
Thank you, David. I also want to take the opportunity to announce the decisions that I've made to combine the Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs and the Vice Chancellor for Student Success back into one position. We had it that way for years at Tarrant County College, and I think that we have grown and matured enough in our student development services area. We're really on the right course, thanks to all of the great work that all of you in this room and many other people who are not in this room have done. And so I've asked Dr. Joy Gates Black to take on the role of both of those positions. I don't know what we're going to call it yet, but she will be taking over that, and she's, she's worked with David very, very closely for all of the while she's been here, and they'll work even a little bit closer until he leaves. So Dr. Gates Black, thank you for agreeing to step up and take that opportunity on as well. Thank you. Now, Board Members, the next thing I have as part of my report, we have a number of new employees, and I'm going to call on Tim Marshall first to introduce our new Director of Information Security. And I will tell you that James August is here thanks to a state requirement that we must have a directive of information security. I think we probably would have done it eventually anyway, but perhaps we were urged on by that directive. Mr. Marshall?
Yes, thank you, and again, thank you, Board, for entertaining me. Please join me in welcoming Dr. James August as our new Director of Information Security, and he started on December 2nd, 2013. Jim Holt, a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from Temple University, a Master of Science in Aerospace Engineering from Penn State, and a PhD in Aerospace Engineering from UT Arlington. So we can now claim fame to our first rocket scientist here at the district. He is a Certified Information Security Manager, a Six Sigma Black Belt, a commercial pilot and flight instructor. He is certified in information technology infrastructure library methodologies and has completed project management professional coursework and is in progress towards becoming a certified professional in healthcare information and management systems. He comes to us from Net.org Incorporated in Dallas, a global healthcare software and services firm. He previously held positions at I2 Technologies and Lockheed Martin Aeronautics. Jim is married to Kimla Katropia, and they have three children, Emily, who is five, and twins Annabelle and Andrew, who are two. One day he'll look like. His hobbies are spending time with his family, home improvement, golf, and watching Formula One and NASCAR auto racing. Please welcome me, please welcome Dr. Jim August to our group.
Welcome, Dr. August. We are so pleased to have you as our rocket scientist. However, I will tell you, when Tim was reading your background, Evelyn Blanc almost stood up in her chair when he said, when she said you were a commercial pilot, so she may be trying to steal your boy too.
I know the minimum requirement is hello, so I'll say hello, but I also want to say that what Tim didn't say is it all started at community college. I have an associate, I have a certificate and an associate's degree from Lehigh County Community College.
Great, great, great.
So I understand the mission and I'm excited to be here and to support it. So if there's any questions or any other comments?
We're glad you're here.
And I'm glad to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm going to call on Dr. Carlos Morales.
I had a question.
Question, I'm sorry.
I wonder, can you fly, can you pilot a Learjet?
Almost.
Here we go.
Here we go.
We got a Learjet. The Chancellor has a Learjet.
Dr. LeBlanc will let me have it, it's hers. Dr. Morales, you're up next.
Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Jack Dalrymple as our District Director of Dual Credit. He's a retired Navy Captain and has a 30-year career on active duty as a Surface Warfare Officer that encompass operational assignments to four combat ships in the Atlantic Fleet and three tours as a cabinet-level official on the Headquarters Staff of Major Commands. His background in education began in the Navy, when he, where he served as a faculty and administrator at the U.S. Naval Academy and the U.S. Naval War College. Following his Navy career, Jack served briefly as Director of Human Resources before landing at TCC and practicing his true passion, educating the nation's future workforce and its leader. He also worked at TCC Northeast Campus, previously as Director of Dual Credit and also Director of Weekend College. He's a strong opponent of mentoring, and he has also taught six sections of STSC 011 at the Northeast Campus. He's active in the community, and his recent activities include Board of Directors for the Kendall Chamber of Commerce, his current president-elect for the Kendall Rotary, and on the educational arena, he received an undergraduate degree at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. He holds a Master's in National Security and an EDS in Educational Leadership. He is a doctorate candidate in Educational Leadership at Liberty University in Virginia. Please join me in welcoming TCC Connect.
Jack, welcome. We're glad to have you in your new role.
Oh, well, thank you. I am glad to be here. I have wanted to work at TCC for many, many years and was extremely pleased to get that opportunity four years ago, and I welcome the challenge, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Reginald, you're next.
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees, good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing the newest member to the Office of Grants Development and Compliance. Alicia Hunter joined the team on October 21, 2013. On 21, 2013, as the Director of Grants Compliance. In that role, Alicia leads the college's grants management and compliance functions and supervises the work of the Office of Grants Compliance. She's responsible for creating, implementing, evaluating, and refining a system of ongoing oversight, guidance, training, and support for project managers of publicly and privately-funded grant projects throughout the district. Alicia has over 20 years' experience as an accountant, including nearly 15 years with the Dallas County Community College District in a variety of district-level and college-level grants management and compliance roles. Most recently, since 2009, Alicia has served as the Grants Compliance Manager at Richland College. She holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration with a minor in Accounting from Henderson State University in Arkansas. Please welcome to TCC, Alicia Hunter.
Welcome, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you. I'd like to say good evening to President Appleman and the Board of Trustees, as well as our Chancellor. As Vice Chancellor Gates mentioned, I'm the Director of the Grants Compliance Unit under the direction of a wonderful person by the name of Jackie Mackey, and, and who sends her best wishes in her absence, she is on a family emergency. But the purpose of the Grants Compliance Unit is to, in the words of our Chancellor, manage the grants, the public and private grants that we get, follow all the rules and regulations to meet the compliance expectations of our funders and our auditors, and position ourselves to get future grants to benefit our students, which is the main reason we are all here. We really appreciate the backing that we have received from Chancellor Hadley and from the KELP members because one of our goals is to get all of our project managers into our fundamentals training. And we do have our first training scheduled for February 4th at the Trinity River Campus, and almost enrollment is at capacity for that particular class. But we still have a long way to go to get all our project managers trained on all of our campuses, so we continue to enlist the support of the KELP and our Chancellor to get that training done because it's, without these grants, as Chancellor Hadley had mentioned, with, in corporate services alone, we've gotten almost a million dollars just in 2013. So it takes a lot to manage those grants, and we really need our project managers to attend this training so that they are aware of all the things that are required so that we pass our audits with flying colors, and as Chancellor Hadley said, we are eligible to get more grant money for our students. And I'm very happy to be here, and are there any questions for our compliance unit?
Well, I think we all know you mean business.
Yes, absolutely.
Mark McLendon just loves you already, I can just tell. But thank you so much, and welcome, we're very pleased that you're here.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Dr. Joy Gates Black has a person to introduce.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Elizabeth Landwermeyer as our new Southeast Campus Director of Financial Aid. Liz, as she is called by people who've gotten to know her, has been a great resource and an excellent contributor to the TCC Financial Aid Team for more than 10 years. For four years, she served as a Financial Aid Associate at the South Campus. After that, she spent three years as a Financial Aid Specialist at the District Financial Aid Office. Most recently, she served as the District Assistant Director of Financial Aid. During her time at TCC, Liz has been nominated for the Chancellor's Excellence Award in Innovation and Creativity, and most recently, she was selected as a presenter at the 2014 National Alucian Live Conference in Anaheim, California. Liz holds a Bachelor of Science degree in interdisciplinary studies with a focus in education from Texas Wesleyan University and an Associate in Arts Degree from Tarrant County College. Liz was born and raised in Fort Worth and is a very proud Texan. She enjoys reading, movies, cooking, spending time with her family, and traveling. Her travels thus far have taken her to England, Central Mexico, and Hawaii. She is currently planning her next adventure in Australia. Liz is an avid foodie and incorporates her love of travel by visiting establishments featured on the Food Network. Liz's dedication to student success, her demonstrated leadership skills, her extensive knowledge of financial aid, and her academic credentials have prepared her well for her new role at the Southeast Campus as Director of Financial Aid. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Elizabeth Landwermeyer to her new role.
Welcome, Elizabeth, and congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you. I just want to say, I appreciate the opportunity to be formally introduced to you. I'm a proud TCC graduate, it was 201999, and it was Tarrant County Junior College at the time. I'm excited about the opportunity and look forward to working with everyone at the Southeast Campus.
Thank you so much, you're welcome. Dr. Capola?
We're excited to have you on our campus too, Liz. It is my pleasure to always welcome more people into our family, and I want to introduce Lavier Lefler, our new Vice President of Student Development at the Southeast Campus. Dr. Lefler grew up in the country in southeast Iowa, and Larry always has a shout-out for Iowa, and has, but has spent her roots in the Texas Valley, and she's a first-generation college student. She received her Bachelor of Science in Psychology with a minor in Sociology from Iowa State University. She then pursued her MS Degree in Counseling from the University of Houston at Clear Lake. She is a licensed mental health counselor and an internationally-certified alcohol and drug counselor. She worked in healthcare for many years as a therapist and an administrator before switching careers and pursuing a position at a local community college. Realizing her passion for working in higher education, she returned to Iowa State University, which she obtained her PhD in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies. Prior to accepting this position, she was Dean of Academic Services at Indian Hills Community College in Atamwa, Iowa. During her tenure there, she also served as Associate Dean for Academic and Student Services, Department Chair of Housing and Counseling Services, and as Director of Counseling Services. Dr. Lefler is a member of the American College Counseling Association, American Psychological Association, and the Association of Higher Education and Disability. She has two daughters, and the three of them keep busy in various sporting activities and enjoy traveling. Lavier has already made a positive impact on the Southeast Campus. Can you please join me in welcoming Dr. Lefler to our family?
Welcome, Dr. Lefler. We are so pleased to have you here.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, and fellow Board Members. I am truly excited to be here. I can't tell you how thrilled I am to be part of the TCC family. Although I've only been here a few weeks, a few months, it seems like I've been here a lifetime. Everybody's been so friendly and so easy to get to know, it makes it very, very comfortable. Our commitment to student success is outstanding. I see that at all across the campus and all across the other campuses as well. And also our commitment to the community and the independent school districts. And for me to see that in just two short months says a lot for what our colleges are doing out here, so I'm thrilled about that. I'm also thrilled to work under the leadership of Dr. Capola. I love his leadership style, he's always there, he says, "Call me," checks if you need anything, and I hate to do that, but I do, and he might, you know how busy presidents are, he always takes the time to get back to me right away, and I appreciate that so much. And I must say, when I first came here, I thought, five colleges, one district, this isn't going to work. Well, Dr. Beatty, she's the glue that keeps us vice presidents together, and it does work. And actually, it's the best system I've ever came from, because the other vice presidents, we work so closely together, they're like my equals. They have, I can go to them for like, "What do you guys do for this?" and they help me out, we can call them for anything, so I really appreciate that. that. And again, Dr. Beatty's leadership in keeping us all moving in the same direction is outstanding. So, the system is wonderful. The leadership here is outstanding, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful year and a great future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Well, uh, Board Members, if you will take a few minutes, when you get time, to go through your notebook and look at, uh, well, go online, however you want to do it, look at all of those wonderful campus accolades, uh, from all of the campuses. Uh, we put these in writing for you every month because there are so many things, uh, for which we are grateful, from our faculty, our staff, our students, uh, the community campus, our Student Development Services. There are just all kinds of, of great activities there. And also, in the back of your book, you will see a listing of the various, um, news clippings, uh, that we've had, uh, over the last month, as well as, uh, you will see the announcements that we have made, uh, from our Public Relations and Marketing Department. We are truly on the map. There's just one thing I'm going to highlight, and I hope the President will forgive me tonight for not going through all these wonderful things, but it's been a pretty long evening. But I do want to say publicly just how excited I am about the wonderful, uh, articulation agreements that we have with all of the universities around us and sound that a little bit for reaching. But the one I want to highlight tonight is the one that we, uh, consummated in December, end of November, end of November, I guess, since before we had the last board meeting, with Texas Tech University. That's called Texas Teach TCC. Did I just get that right, Dr. Jordan? That's close enough. Doctors Darlage and Jordan both have teacher education programs on their campuses. The students who go through those programs earn the Associate of Arts in Teaching. And we've had a good number of students who graduate every year from that program. Uh, I know the last three years we've had, I believe, over fifty students graduating each year in that program. And we're very, very proud of that. Texas Tech took great notice to the fact that we were graduating all these students. And so, we have a, have a specific articulation agreement with Texas Tech as well as Stephen F. Austin University. But Texas Tech came to us and said, "We want to do something a little differently," and they have done that. It's a wonderful opportunity for our students who want to sign up with Texas Tech to earn their baccalaureate degree. In this particular group, they are majoring in either English as a second language or bilingual education. And they will earn that degree in one year. They started last Monday as students of Texas Tech, and they will graduate December fourteenth or fifteenth or whatever with their s- baccalaureate degree. We are partnering with Fort Worth Independent School District. They have identified, I believe, it's three different schools, elementary schools, where they're going to place these students year-round to work with master teachers. The principals of those schools were there to join us the day we signed the agreement. We had the kickoff. We had thirteen students who were there, and I think there were thirteen signed up for the program. Texas Tech is giving all of those students a scholarship, um, if they had a grade point average of three-point, oh, I believe it is. At the end of this first semester, which will be, uh, May, the students who have done well and kept their GPAs up will get an additional scholarship. Their program will be offered completely online, but they will work with the schools, in those schools, for the entire year with the master teacher. So, they will have so much more than just student teaching. When they graduate, they will know all of the ins and outs of teaching. They'll, they will have gone through all the difficulties of keeping students in line. They will have gone through all of the great, uh, techniques about motivating students and keeping them in a place where they can really learn. So, they'll come out. Texas Tech vows that those students will be the very best-trained teachers in the state when they come through those programs. Our students are ecstatic about their opportunity to complete their associate, their baccalaureate degree in just one year. My hope is that we will, this, uh, partnership with Texas Tech will entice many other universities to look at our students in the same or similar ways. I suspect that when Stephen F. Austin learns about the Texas Tech program, they will certainly want to do something to shore up their program to get more of these students. But that's just one more opportunity of something that we're doing at Tarrant County College to really make life better. Most of these students, I talked with a number of them at, um, the meeting that day, and they told me there is no way they could have gone away to college. So, they, they would either, perhaps, you know, try to another two or three or four years to complete their baccalaureate degree. Many of them had taken that long to complete the associate degree. And now they'll have that baccalaureate degree in one year. So, we're very, very excited about that. I want to pass that on and want to give a special thank you to, uh, Doctors Jordan, Dr. Darlage, Dr. Wells, Dr. Harper, Jane Harper, Suzanne Carter, all of whom worked very closely with this project. If I've missed anybody, I'm sorry. But those are the main players in that, and we are very, very pleased. TCC is all about connecting. And next month, we're gonna talk a little bit about TCC Connect and how we're really going to connect more people to the college. So, that's my report, Madam President.
You recall that last month, we, uh, voted on the candidates for the Tarrant Appraisal District Board, and we have received notice and will send a congratulatory letter to Johnny Bennett, John Newbanks, John Molyneux, Michael O'Donnell, and Joe Potthoff, who were elected, um, to serve on that board. You heard about the Salvation Army yet, Senator, um, and so we will now adjourn and go into closed meeting for deliberation of real property, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, Texas Government Code, and consultation with our attorneys, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, Texas Government Code. Thank you for being with us tonight. We are adjourned. We will reconvene, but do not anticipate any action.